And full rise to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. I know it's a nice evening, it's hard to be inside, but we are tonight. We do our due diligence. Please remember our mission and vision as we go through both of agendas tonight and as we make decisions for the school as a whole. So, all right, getting started. We'll start with the Algonah Community School District agenda. We need a motion then to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing of delegations, we have none. We do have a brief communication to the board.
Yeah, I want to thank Gloria. Gloria Vartel for many years of service to the Algonah Community School District Board, as well as the Taithanka Board prior to that. And thank you for everything you've done for us. And we have your lifetime pass coming, and it'll be here soon. We'll get that to you. And we've got some cupcakes over there if anyone wants to have one to celebrate Gloria and everything she's done for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
I was on the board when Gloria came over when the Taithanka reorganization came. And so, it was very good to have her, and she brought a lot of knowledge to help us get through that reorganization and to know the community of Taithanka a lot better also. So, as we went through that. So, thank you, Gloria. And don't be a stranger. Don't be afraid to call us or talk to us anytime you need to.
Well, keep in touch.
I'm sure you will. All right. Consent items, you should have received in your packet on Friday earlier, and maybe had a little chance to look through them. And are these yet? There are some extra ones that got here for you here tonight to look at also. Any questions or comments on the consent items? I didn't think I saw anything that looked kind of short, actually, for some of the, looking down the bills and stuff and all of them.
Well, I'm not sure.
So, oh, yeah, I'm sure we will.
I'll go through a short financial review as part of my report as well. And we'll also, you know, approve Lisa to pay bills to close out the month, which is a typical item for us in June.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. We'll move then into the superintendent's report.
Start with a little ISAS data. You take the Iowa statewide assessment student progress in the spring, and we get the data back. And Mrs. Ischen really does an awesome job of digging through that data and, you know, finding areas for us to work on, as well as some areas to highlight. We say there's 21 major data points. That would be reading, math, and science in eighth and 11th that we use. And of those 21 data points, 15 of those 21 improved from the previous year, which is good. That's good data in itself. And four that we don't count in those 15 were 80% proficient, 81%, 81%, and 85. So, you know, 19 of those data points are really high and/or improved from the year before. So, two years in a row of really continued growth in the district, specifically in our area of proficient students. Seven of those that are higher than 80 would be third grade ELA at 81, third grade math at 86, fourth grade ELA at 80, fourth grade math at 80, eighth grade ELA at 85, eighth grade math at 81, and ninth grade ELA had to 82. So, it's some really fantastic data that we just want to continue to build upon, but also recognize our staff and our students for doing such a great job with those. Small financial review. Our revenues versus expenditures continue to look really, really good. Our revenues through May, a little over 17 million, with our expenditures just under 16 million. So, you know, surplus of about 1.5 million or so, but that will balance out over the coming weeks and as Lisa closes out the year, pays out salaries through the rest of the summer, those numbers will get pretty close to even, what we believe. Remember, we thought, you know, small surplus is what we forecasted probably back in September. We made some changes with some of our hourly, both food service and teacher associates. So, we expect that to be really close to balanced as we end this year. We're still projected to end the year with a 17% general fund solvency. Iowa Association of School Boards recommended areas 7 to 17% and an authorized UAB ratio of 13.7%. Again, target 7 to 17. So, financially, things look really good. Forecasted to end the year in a great place, and we'll see how that closes out at the end of the month and into the CAR process that Lisa will go through. Last thing with our board retreat. I sent out a date after last meeting. It's not a good date. It's a fair week, and that's certainly way too much going on that week for that. But want all of you to consider and mark down if the August 8th, 9th, and 10th possibly work. That's the next week. That's corresponding to what we did last year. And, you know, as we look back on it, there's a reason, because, you know, everything's really busy in June with baseball, softball. You know, July, we got people going in different directions, and then the first week of August is fair week. So, this is kind of a place that it falls. So, put those dates down and let me know if those work out, or we can find something that week.
And maybe we can finalize it next month, too, but we can let ahead of time.
Yep.
So...
And I will put those dates again in the memo on Friday.
So, those basically Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Yep.
For us to consider.
Okay. Any questions on any of the ISAS data or the financial review?
More we can talk about in the retreat, too. I'm sure we will. A little bit of all that data and stuff.
Yep.
So, no. All right. If there is none, we'll go into the new business. We start off with the second reading of the board's 700 policies.
Those are all in your general information. There's two in that general information that are yellow. Those are the two that I would recommend changes to. 701.2 and 708 are both highlighted. Those two updates are recommended by the Iowa Association of School Boards. The first update is to language that matches the new legislation allowing flexible use of preschool, foundation aid, professional development supplement, homeschool assistance program, and TLC. Basically meaning that you can flex those dollars into a flexible account to use in other places. I do not believe that will be a typical practice or a practice that we use in the district, but we should have our board policy to reflect the legislative change. The second change is in regard to records, like how long we have to keep certain records. And some of those timelines have been updated. For example, you know, maybe you needed to keep something five years, and maybe it's 10 now. So, some of those timelines have changed, and this is just an update to that policy to reflect that legislative change. Everything else, I would recommend no change as it aligns with the current Iowa Association of School Board recommendation. There are a number of 700 series that we updated in March due to some changes. So, a lot of this series has been updated in the last six months. So, we're in really good shape there. So, the two recommendations would be to 701.2 and 708.
All right. We do need a motion for those for the update.
I do a motion to approve second reading board policies, series 700, special notice on 701.2 and 708.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Gloria. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A policy we're updated. We also have the first reading of the 800 series.
Yeah, nothing for us to do with the 800 series. It's just our first reading links there to take a look at. That very well might actually be moved out to September, and the reason being on Friday, late on Friday, we received an email from Iowa Association of School Boards. There are 31 policy changes that need to be made for next year due to legislation. So, that's a big one. We just did two. We have 31 that we need to do next month. So, the 800 series might actually get pushed off, but we'll keep it in there for the first reading and look for a number of policy updates in July to be second read, reading in August.
All right. I'll be looking forward to all that, I guess. Yay. All right. We have done this in the past. We're looking at a resolution to transfer funds for athletic safety equipment.
Okay. Let's see if you can see it here. Resolution to transfer funds. The Iowa code allows the school districts to transfer funds from the general fund to the student activity with board resolution to do so. The resolution transfers the number 13,459.66. It's very specific, because that's what we spent on batting helmets, shoulder pads, helmets, protective equipment that we've purchased in the last year. Mr. Jacobson keeps that totaled for us, and that's where that exact number comes from. We have made this same transfer to previous years. So, I do recommend the approval of this resolution transferring $13,459.66 from the general fund to the student activity fund for protective and safety equipment.
Since this resolution doesn't need specific language read, or not?
I read all about this today.
Okay.
It just basically says you have to title it, you have to, don't necessarily hack, have a roll call, but roll call votes, and then just be specific, like have a specific document within, like we do for the bank resolution.
So, you can just simply say that?
Yes.
Because our resolution says the specific piece.
I make a motion to approve the resolution transferring funds for safety equipment. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Yep. Andrea, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yep.
This is pretty common across the state.
Yeah.
And do you ever anticipate it becoming self-sufficient at the departments or not?
You know, I think we, hopeful. We're hopeful. We're pretty conservative in how we do this. There are much larger amounts that are transferred in some case. Our student activity does a good job, but it's always been, you know, that money goes into that that's from our gate receipts, you know, from our events. It doesn't go towards salaries or transportation, but for all other equipment and needs. So, there's lots of needs and not a lot of revenue opportunities. So, Tom, to answer your question, I think we're always hopeful that they can be completely self-sufficient. I think it's probably a reality that the general fund helping with safety equipment, that will probably continue.
I would say that's, yeah, I would agree.
With the conference price of admission going up, have we, did it make a difference?
You know, I think it helped. However, our officials' costs probably went up 15% as well, which is why we knew we needed to make an aggressive change. So, I think it certainly helped, but our costs increased as well. So, if anything, it's probably closer to balance than anything.
Gotcha.
Any other further discussion? All right. We will ask for a roll call, then.
Davis?
Yes.
Swaji?
Yes.
Muccio? No?
Old, new.
Sorry. Bartel?
Yes.
Nudan?
Yes.
And Vince?
Yes.
All right. With that, resolution passes. All right. We have another, approve an additional resolution to our bank depositories for the reorganization.
Yeah, bank depository resolution. This is something that we do annually, but typically we do it in July. We're doing it a month early, and the reason is we're adding Security State Bank to this list, which hadn't been on the list previously. Security State Bank is where all of the Laverne Community School District funds are located, all their accounts. So, we need to approve, add them to the resolution for the amount of $3,400,000. The other four, Iowa State Bank, Farmer State Bank, Northwest, and then UMB, those remain as they have been, and those balances are updated.
The UMB, yeah, for the, in case that was...
So, that the UMB is increased if we would, for the sale of bonds for a possible fieldhouse project.
Fieldhouse, yep. Any further discussion on that?
Laverne's spoken.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Laverne, you mean?
Got it.
Yeah, I saw that, too. Just the spelling there. All right. If hearing no discussion, we need a motion then to approve the resolution for the bank depositories.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? One last time. All right, hearing none. Do we need a roll call on this one, too, since it's a resolution?
Binsy?
Yes.
Nudan?
Yes.
Swaji?
Yes.
Bartel?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Resolution passes. Okay. Well, that will, we are coming to the end then of the Algonah Community School District agenda. Want people to know we're going to go into closed session, and just for live streaming, the live stream will end. It will not come back on when we go into the newly reorganization board, but we will have it filmed, the next one, so you can watch it later on the access channels, I believe, right? Is that how we were explaining?
The recording will post tomorrow, but you can't interrupt a live stream, so as soon as it ends, it ends.
It ends. And with going into closed session between the two, as we need to this time. All right. We would then need a motion to go into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, or performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to an individual's reputation. That an individual requests a closed session. Performance review for superintendent would have been shorter. Would have been much shorter. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. And I do believe we need a roll call to go into closed session.
Bartel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Swaji?
Yes.
Nudan?
Yes.
Binsy?
Yes.
All right. We are out of closed session. We'd need a motion then to adjourn the Algonah Community School District agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Andrea, we're second. We are adjourned. We are going to now move into the newly reorganized Algonah Community School District agenda. We'd need a motion to approve that agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Hearing of delegations, we don't have any at this point. Any communication to the board? Looks like none at this point also. Approve it ended, didn't we mention? We did, all right. Consent items, just the minutes from the last meeting, right? That we need to approve?
We don't have any IJAG from communications?
They're not here. We didn't know if they were going to be here to speak or not.
Gotcha.
We need a motion then to approve the minutes of the newly...
So moved.
Thank you, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving right in then to new business. We have the school fees for the 23-24 year already.
Yeah, school fees, trying to get it so it's not... So, the, what I've put in as an artifact is this year's school fees. And the reason for that is that my recommendation is to not increase fees for the 2023-2024 school year. We have been able in the district to not raise fees since 2019, 2020. And I think, again, if we don't think we need to, then I don't think we should. That's something that we should relieve families of. The one change that could happen after this meeting would be in lunch prices, because the federal government does come in and say your minimum has to be. So, that could happen after you guys approve these fees, and we would certainly communicate that to you. But my recommendation is to keep our school fees the same for 23-24 as they were this past year.
Yeah, I think we've done that over the past years, and that's always been a board goal to keep them as low as possible. We don't have to change, let's not increase.
Do you guys need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to hold our school fees the same as last year.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Thank you, Tom. So, the motion is to continue with the school fees for the 23-24 year as they were in the Any more discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries. Fees are approved. Becky Hacker-Cluver agreement?
Yeah, Becky Hacker-Cluver. Her role in the district has changed over the years. She started originally in the district, this is before me, as a leadership coach. That kind of, it grew as we went through some transition in the district, even into some quasi, maybe curriculum director type stuff. We reduced her role last year after we hired Mrs. Ischen to two and a half days in the district. That work in those two and a half days, I think, is valuable. I know is valuable, and it's very instrumental, I think, in developing, helping to develop our leaders, specifically our building principals and instructional coaches. She has monthly conversations with our leaders around the goals that those people set with me, so the principals work with me. We create goals to help them. She works with them on their goals and what we can continue to do to achieve those goals. We have paid for her contract out of TLC's funds in the past. We would continue to do that. This proposal's for $14,951.52, and I would recommend approval of her agreement for the 23-24 school year.
Any discussion? Seems like it's worked well. This same as last year, right?
This is the same as last year.
Yes, last year, I thought. We need a motion then to approve the agreement for Becky Hacker-Cluver.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special education sharing agreement.
John Heager, superintendent of Laverne, former superintendent of Laverne, will work as our director of student services and special ed director for the next two years. Manson-Northwest Webster inquired about sharing Mr. Heager as their special education director, so they would be purchasing 40% of his contract. We would also receive three additional FTE, so that's per pupil amount. So, that's about $22,000 that we would receive on top of them buying 40% of his contract. We anticipated that we would be able to share him as their special education director. So, he would spend two days a week in the Manson-Northwest Webster district, three days a week in our district. I would recommend sharing Mr. Heager as a special education director with Manson-Northwest Webster at 40% for next year.
What are the transportation costs? What would...
For...
I just see transportation costs will be divided up equally. What?
His travel between, but, you know, there really won't be, because he's going to spend days.
But that's, yeah.
So, I don't see there being transportation expenses associated with that. If he was going to travel in the day...
Back and forth a couple times a day, that'd be okay.
But we think it'd be, it's more beneficial to be whole days.
Yeah. If you're not spending an hour on the road.
Yeah.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the sharing agreement with Manson-Northwest Webster.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Another one we do annually, the approve the specialty underwriters agreement.
Yep, specialty underwriters right there. This is the insurance that we have on all of our electrical equipment in our district, although our copy machines are no longer part of that. So, you'll see there's a reduction in the premium of $93,000, almost $100,000. We pay this premium out of the management fund rather than the general fund. As I said, the quote is significantly lower than years past. As we changed copier leases, we moved it into that lease. And the reason we did that is we renewed a proposal at $66,000, $93,000 less than the previous year.
Amazing.
With the new copy machine agreement, is it about a wash? Did it cost us about 93, or did we actually end up saving some money?
It's probably about a wash. Probably the biggest thing is that it's paid out of the management fund that way as well. That was one of the great things about specialty underwriters previously. But it, so, I'd say it's better than a wash. I think we're ahead.
And you got better service, so, great.
And the leases will be paid out of the pebble.
Yeah, yeah, not even management pebble, yeah.
Sweet.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with specialty underwriters. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The educational assistance program.
There are times in the district when staff members add certification or endorsement to fulfill their duties here. And the district traditionally, prior to myself, as well as currently, has reimbursed that to cover those expenses. Actually, reimburse is probably not the correct term, because we pay the school directly in most cases. That's how we want to do it. What this does is put that program into writing, and that's what our auditors certainly would prefer us to do. So, when they see an amount going to Iowa State University, they know that we have a board-approved program in place to do that. So, it makes sense why we would do this. This is a program we've ran through the auditors as well as our school attorney. It outlines up to $5,200, and that's because that's the number the IRS has drawn that it wouldn't be considered salary up to that amount. So, there's tax implications to that. The district preferred method is that we pay the institution directly, and we are able to in almost all cases. So, I recommend the approval of the educational assistance program to match our current practice.
Yeah. Just helps us with some auditing.
So moved.
Thank you, Lanny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Something we do this time every year, the year-end payment authorization for Lisa.
Yeah, not an artifact for that, right?
What's that?
Yes, that, you're right. I just don't have an artifact in there.
Oh, you just don't have one on you yet. But it's what.
So, the year-end, we need to approve an authorization to have Lisa pay June bills as they are due to help with the year-end process, rather than have them approve at the next meeting. We need to close our books on June 30th. So, this is a typical authorization for us in June to help her finish out the school fiscal year, which ends at the end of this month. So, I recommend authorizing Lisa to pay June bills as needed.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? As I mentioned, it's something we've done annually. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Set a public hearing for the fieldhouse project.
So, we've talked a lot about facilities over the last, now, a year, but more intensely over the last three or four months. As you guys know, we're pursuing opportunities in a fieldhouse project. Still, a lot has to happen in that, in that process. But our next step in the process is to simply set a public hearing, and the public hearing takes place, as we're required by law, to set a date and time for a public hearing to use sales tax dollars towards building projects. So, that's why you have to have a public hearing to do that, is because of the dollars we would possibly use. So, what we need to do is set a public meeting for July 10th at 7:00 PM. There's a resolution in your general information for up to that amount. Again, that doesn't mean that's what you're spending, that's just, that's just putting up to that, that number. What that number would be is our current debt plus possible fieldhouse expenses together to equal that. So, that, what we're approving today is just the public meeting to possibly approve those funds. Nothing more than that, I guess, is what I want to emphasize.
There will be no new tax or anything on this project? It's all?
Great question, Tom. No new tax. This will not be funded with property tax dollars. This will be funded with the sales tax dollars, as we have with all of the building projects in the district, at least for the last 13 years.
And this would be our next school board meeting we would open with that.
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the public hearing on the fieldhouse project.
Thank you, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, resolution. We need a roll call.
Binsy?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nudin?
Yes.
Lajie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. I gotta listen for my name now when you do that.
Well, hey, I have a certain order going in.
Yeah. All right. It's all right. Next one, this is approve engagement letter with Piper Sandler.
So, along the same lines, next month, Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler, he'll zoom into our meeting, and he'll explain how we can use save tax dollars to punt, to fund a possible fieldhouse project. What we need to do in this approval is to approve Piper Sandler as our placement agent, our underwriter of the proposed issuance of bonds to the fieldhouse project. So, we're just approving an engagement letter with Piper Sandler to head in that, head in that direction. Matt Gillespie's who, and Piper Sandler's who we've used for all of our projects since I've been here, and I think probably previous to that as well with the DAC.
Yep. And he'll be zooming in, right? You said.
Yep, he'll zoom in and explain that to you guys of how we can do that.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Piper Sandler.
Okay. Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll have time for more discussion next month too with, with Matt Gillespie. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Allers and Cooney.
Yeah, same line.
Yeah, same line.
We also need to improve an engagement letter with Allers and Cooney as, to provide us counsel, our legal representative in the issuance of bonds that could be used for the fieldhouse project. So, there, there are legal representative in this, in this process, actually in the resolutions that were written for, for this meeting as well as some others.
Why do we use Allers and Cooney on this, and Avery's our normal school attorney?
Yeah, their background in, in this work, specifically in, in school building, school financial things, they would be considered the school experts in this area.
Like 98% of the states?
I think Allers and Cooney probably handles all of the building, and all is probably a big word, but it's a lot for sure.
I don't know if the person's still there, and Ed Beddell was phenomenal doing this job, if Allers Cooney. Probably now retired, to be my guess.
Beth Gorb is who does, Grob is who does this for us now, yeah.
So, I would, this is the firm to go with. You ready for a motion, Mr. Davis?
I am.
To approve Allers and Cooney engagement letter.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, some open enrollments, looks like out.
Yep, we do have three open enrollment applications that have all met requirements for approval.
What's CAN?
It's a school district that has a complete online option.
Oh, gotcha.
So, Cananita is a school district in Iowa, just like, you know, they have everything as any other, but then they also have a complete online option. So, that is students open enroll to Cananita.
And that's for the online option?
It is.
All right. Need a motion then to approve open enrollments.
So moved.
Thanks, Lanny. Do we have a second?
Second.